All the word, you need a planning board for Monday, June twenty four, twenty twenty four at six oh three. All right, first item we have here, open forum, anybody have any updates?
Um, yes, Scott, because tag is remote and we're have a hybrid hearing, I think we're required to.
Are required to read that off?
Yeah.
Anyone care to do that?
Pursuits chapter two of the acts of twenty twenty three, this meeting will be conducted in person as a courtesy. Be a remote means in accordance with ethical law, please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. The meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated, technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by using the zoom login information provided. You can also watch on the Duxbury, uh, public access chips.
Thank you.
I do not know how many hundreds of times I have now read that.
Yeah. It's a little unusual, Russ actually have remote. But uh, either way, okay, uh, open forum, anyone on the board have anything for open forum today?
Do you know?
Alright, okay, me. Tag, anything?
Uh, well, are we gonna, you know, I can address it all in the MBTA zoning update if that's appropriate.
No, that would be appropriate, there's anything that's not on the agenda?
No, no.
Alright, so our next.
I guess not on the agenda? Well, I'm not sure exactly how that works, but I I have something on the agenda, but then there was an additional item that I wanted to bring up. I don't think it's on the agenda, is that correct?
Uh, about the covenant?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Um, so, yes, I have something in addition to what's on the agenda at the appropriate.
Okay, I think, uh, I think we should address that during the session, prior to guests. Okay, so, alright, nothing there for open forum, first item we have is four twenty one Elm Street cell tower site plan approval deadline extension. Are they just looking for more time?
I think.
We have some.
Good evening, my name is Francis Parisi, I represent Vertex Tower Assets LLC. Uh, as the board recalls, we were in front of the board back in twenty twenty, seeking site plan approval for a telecommunications facility at four twenty one Elm Street. Due to circumstances not within our control merely exacerbated by the pandemic, uh, we were unable to complete it by June of twenty twenty two. And received an extension till June of twenty twenty four. For similar reasons, we haven't been able to finish it yet, and we would ask for another uh, two year extension of the site plan rule, nothing has changed with the project, it's still moving forward. Uh, the site plans have not changed in any, in any respect, um, and we would just ask that the board uh, allow us to wrap everything up so that we can move forward with it within the next two years.
Scott, I have a little issue here. I have done a bunch of work in the space and have worked repeatedly with Vertex and do not feel that it's appropriate for me to sit on this case.
Okay.
And I don't sit on, uh, cases, the cell tower cases, um, from the ZDA either. I I know Fran, but I don't, that that that's not affecting this, it's just that I I've been deeply involved in this. Work and I I I don't have any desire to feel as if my professional efforts in any way compromise my journey.
Okay, so do we need more to extend this?
I don't think so, it's just a deadline extension, it's not like a.
Yeah, we're not.
Terminator.
You doing anything, so?
And there's one here, I think that's fine.
Okay. The worst case scenario is if we had to invoke something later, Brandon, uh. We have one more. Uh, we could do that, but in in the meantime, I don't see any reason we want to continue the project, obviously, we'd like to get it done, so, um. See, they got a motion, and so I would entertain a motion to grant the extension four twenty one Elm Street cell tower site plan approval as requested.
So moved.
Okay, second, second, motion is second, all those in favor, roll call vote, start with you, Tag.
Tag Carpenter, aye.
Matthew Ray, aye.
Scott Castagrande, aye.
And Wayne Dennis, aye.
Hey. It should be all set, turns out we need to have a fourth, we'll revoke later when we get the other member in.
I I appreciate that, I respect Mr. Dennison's, uh, recusal and, uh, uh, well, I'm gonna sign off now and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, select a plenty board rep for the sidewalk and bike path committee.
I nominate Matthew Ray.
I'll say you fall any bone, if you could put him in.
I, well, I, before you value, we talked, I said, I'm not on any of these reports, so I'll.
Now you are, this one.
Now you are.
Okay, well, I don't think, unless somebody else wants it, Tag, do you want it, I mean, are we fighting over this?
Oh, it's.
Okay. Noble pursuit. Yeah, all good, all good. Okay, so. We don't need to vote that into place, do we? We have a volunteer?
I would just.
Okay. Alright.
I'm.
We have a motion in the second, there we go, there's a motion, and we have a second, all those in favor, Tag?
Tag Carpenter, aye.
Matthew Ray, aye.
Scott Castagrande, aye.
Wayne Dennis, aye.
Okay. Okay, then we have minutes of June ten, twenty twenty four.
These I sent out this morning, so if you need more time, I can push it to the next one.
One more time, I wasn't there for that meeting.
I I did not need more time, I moved to adopt the June tenth, twenty twenty four meetings as well.
Okay, second, anybody have any discussion on that? No changes, okay, so you're gonna call for the vote?
Tag Carpenter, aye.
Matthew Ray, aye.
Scott Castagrande, aye.
Wayne Dennis, aye.
Alright, next item, three, three, three Franklin Street subdivision, water line and drainage easement discussion. This is what I'm going to need from. But.
Alright, so.
Right?
Now I'm gonna. Is there anybody here for three, three, three thirty three Franklin Street subdivision? Let's have a discussion, what's going on?
So, we presented the 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 easements per review, uh, and and I, again, not sure, is it a review and approval from the, from the board?
I I was puzzled as to why the playing board has to approve the easement.
Um, so, he had sent us the easement, it's, um, so it's been a standard condition on the subdivision decisions for the past few years to have. That's written out. Approved easement for town, does we access the public drainage and or water supply structures, if any?
Oh, the reason we're having to prove is because it's an easement in favor of the town.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, we had sent it to town council with the homeowners association documents and, um, Shireen had asked us whether we really need this or not, if the town wants to accept this, because she said usually towns accept drainage easements only once a subdivision roadways accepted as a public way, which is happening in this case. And, yeah. So it's a question of whether or not we even need this.
And that's Amy Questle. Question.
Uh, yeah, Shireen.
Oh, Shireen, okay.
So wastewater system and the water line is gonna stay on private property? But that's a foreseeable plan? Check there. So the town theoretically would never be exercising. Exercising the easements? Well, the grandy, uh, there's an HOA being established for the road and the easement and the drainage structure, right? So if the HOA fails to maintain the drainage structure in the town, I would presume going and try to maintain whatever needs to be maintained in a drainage. Basically, so I, I chances, I don't know how often that happens in some of these private drainage stations across that town, but that's what these ones for. And I'm here because, well, the, the it's unclear whether we need your approval, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, cross the T's, but yes.
The issue for me is that town council has advised that we don't need it, why would we even want? And what was she's advice exactly?
She asked if it's something the planning board typically requires, usually towns accept drainage easements only once the subdivision roadway is accepted as a public way.
It's just not gonna happen.
Um, doesn't town want to accept these easements at this time, she didn't make any edits of easement, but she will. We want.
Mister Chairman?
Yep.
Good evening. So this was a standard condition, uh, that the planning board usually includes with subdivision approvals. And in this case, because it's gonna be a private road, uh, and there will be three separate water services serving each home. Um, there's no need for the, for the water easement, and there's probably no need for the drainage easement as well. Um, there will, there will be a homeowners association that's gonna be taking care of the road and 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 the stormwater management system. And quite frankly, I don't know whether we want the town to, um, in that kind of a private property scenario, whether we'd want the DPW to have access to go in and do maintenance. And so what I was gonna recommend is that the board, um, take a vote to, um, um, uh, waive those requirements or to rescind tho- those, uh, conditions of approval.
Do we have enough people to vote on it?
May I ask a question, because this was before.
Paul, are those, is this easement an expressed condition proceeding to the, to the original subdivision approval?
Yeah, that's, the, these are kind of standard conditions that go along with with all subdivisions. And and this kind of slipped through the cracks where the standard condition got put in when.
Yeah, that was my question, yeah, I I knew it was a standard condition, but I didn't know if it had actually carried over since it was gonna be a private, a private way, if it, if the standard condition stayed in.
I I'm not sure that we can amend the subdivision approval with three votes.
Yeah.
No.
I'm not sure if it's necessary, because the condition says approved easement for town does be access to public drainage and our water supply structures, if any. So I feel as though if the minutes show that it's not required to be fine, or if we know chat somewhere in the line.
Yeah, okay, that if any helps.
Perhaps we could table this for a moment, talk about my next subject, and that might kind of loop in.
So the problem about talking to your next subject is it's not on the agenda, and this is the public here.
Understood.
Yeah, and so I'm happy to have you bring it up, the the issue is uh, you can say whatever you want, but substantively, we can't respond.
Well, it's, it's, okay, I'm looking, I'm really, I mean, I'm essentially looking for guidance on on town processes. And so this is a perfect example of what I'm trying to understand.
Right. Alright, so, so bring it up, and then we can, you have the acting town planner, and you have. Actually, I ran, you can.
Okay, so, so, um, thank you for for hearing Paul Boudreaux, the future through Franklin Street. Um, Paul and I had a conversation a week or two weeks ago, but now, Paul, about the process. So, um, I was having a hard time in the past, I I I couldn't sign the covenant because there was mortgage on the property. As of today, there's no more mortgage on the property. Fully owned by, by us, so, um, we had, um, the covenant has been signed. Emily has two copies, uh, signed and authorized, uh, by the owners, and I brought it here tonight to hopefully get it signed by the planning. I understand that there's not enough people here to sign it, but procedurally, it needs to be signed so that I can record the subdivision in the, in the town, in the county. I'm trying to do that this week. Because next week, and Paul, and Paul, I took as many notes as I could on our call, but I don't, I I feel like I I don't wanna miss anything, I I know there's several steps I need to go through to to release the existing house. The existing house has been renovated, final sign off on on the permit has been given by town, uh, building inspector, and I wanna sell that property. So I'm trying to figure out how to do that, and how fast I can do that, because it's going on the market in about two and a, two weeks. So I gotta be able to say, hey, the town will be able to release the property in assuming so many days, that's what I'm trying to get to, so I understand that, uh, um, the, it'll be, uh, the subdivision will be recorded at the, at this county this, this week. Next week, I I can, in writing, I have to, um, um, apply for, um, new addresses for the new road through the town, I understand I need to do that, and then I have to wait to get that back. The, the road will be done, uh, the, all the road and all the drainage and all the improvements except for the final coat of asphalt will be done by Monday, a week from today. And I have a meeting on, set up with Pat Brennan on Tuesday morning at eight AM, uh, Tuesday the, the second, a week from tomorrow morning, to do his final inspection. He's been there multiple times, he's taken multiple pictures, he's for all accounts, and I know that he's very pleased with the process and and the quality of the work. So, assuming next week I have my addresses, and I have a final report from, from, uh, Mr. Brennan. What are the next steps in order to be able to release one lot with the existing house on? And I'm hoping that if there is a requirement to come back here and get sign offs, and you know, we, people go on vacation, it's not always a quorum, I'm just trying to understand the steps. And I'm trying to avoid walking in here and getting a call fifty minutes before saying, oh my God, the tree warden is, you know, we have to go through another hoop. Because by then, I most likely, hopefully, will have another entity involved in this process, so I'm just trying to understand process, and maybe it's simply that Paul and I get on another call, or we actually get an email of, hey, step A, B, and C, because it's kind of challenging to understand all those hoops. And, um, and and understand, do I have to come back to get the, the, the the parcel release from this board, or is it an administrative thing that can be done through the town? I'm just still trying to understand those processes, so. I understand.
Procedure. Uh, we've already looked at the covenant when we did everything to begin with, right? So all it is is being presented to us now for us to sign it.
Yeah, you guys.
So we don't have to vote.
Right, yeah, and it's a signature thing.
So it's a matter of just getting everybody that are missing down the town all the time. But that should be doable for you.
I'm hoping to have that done this week.
Yeah, because we.
Alright, I can do this.
We did two today.
Well, they're, they're, yeah, they're saying right there, so, but, um, Paul, did, did is that, wha- what else did I miss based on the call we had, I don't, I don't know, again, it's a public hearing, I don't know, I wanna get it, like, should we, should we set up another time to talk, or what's the best way to understand all the the steps that I need to take in the next few months, seven or a month or so?
Mister Chairman, I can, um, answer the procedural questions, and, um, I could have a follow up call with Paul tomorrow morning if he, if he has any, um, further questions. So what we need to do, since he's made substantial progress with, uh, making all of the subdivision improvements of building the road, stormwater system. Um, we need to ask Pat Brennan to go out and to do an inspection, to to do a cost to complete, to give us an estimate of the cost for any remaining work, which includes things like looming and seating shoulders, and there, I don't know if there are shade trees that are, um, required. Um, we may wanna, uh, in- include, um, so w- we, we need to send Pat out, we need a letter from Paul requesting a a cost to complete estimate, we would then ask the engineer to to do that. Pat would come back, um, after doing the inspection with the line item, um, cost estimate for a performance bond, and then we would ask, um, Paul to, uh, post a performance bond that's acceptable to the planning board. And, uh, once that bond is is in hand, and sometimes we ask council to review those bonds if they're tri-party agreements or something, um, other than cash that we could just, um, put into a, a joint account. Um, and and then once that has taken place where the bond's been accepted, the board can vote to release that lot. Having said all that, um, since Mister Boudreaux was just asking to release one lot, and he, um, is in in a little bit of a, a hurry. Um, the board could take a vote to release that one lot. Um, and in the interim, we could get the, uh, this would need to be a scheduled agenda item, um, to be clear, but the board could then vote to release the lot a- on a scheduled agenda item without a bond and, um, um, ask Mister Boudreaux to, uh, to go forward and to secure the bond before the other two lots could be released by the board.
Alright, but we need that as a notice public hearing sometime in the future.
Yeah, and the board doesn't need to do the vote, the lot release at a public hearing. Um, but circling back to the question about the water and the drainage easements. I I think the board could probably vote now to say waive those requirements, but if you would like to be absolutely conservative about this, we could, um, um, advertise and hold a hearing and have the board vote to, um, to amend its conditions of approval. And that, that would be a, you know, the most conservative approach. Uh, so there is a little bit of work left, um, in terms of taking care of that, um, you know, on the agenda and, um, getting a cost to complete and releasing the covenant for the lots.
Emily, when's our next hearing?
July eighth.
Any, any reason we can't do all this by July eighth?
W- we could do it, but, um, we wouldn't. I don't know that we would have time to hold, uh, like a legally advertised hearing, um, with an ad in the newspaper by July eighth. But i- if the board, um, feels that i- it, they can just vote to, um, um, waive the requirement for the water and stormwater easements, um, you could take care of it, you could do that tonight.
So the town council has provided advice that suggests we don't need it. What would, what, what would, what would we need to do in order to deal with the release of one lot?
I think that we could put that on the agenda for the July eighth meeting, and if the board was comfortable just releasing one lot and then making sure that you have a bond in hand before you release the covenant on the remaining two lots. Um, that's something that you could do to work with, um, with the owner, um.
So my, yeah, my suggestion is that we deal with all of this on July. We can deal with the water line and drainage easement and the release of a single lot when we have a sufficient number of people here to have, have more than three people over.
I think that would be fine.
It, it is a pre-existing house lot, yeah, so it seems.
This is still the house.
It seems straightforward.
Yeah, there's always been one.
Yeah, so. So, well, I guess I'd move to defer discussion of both issues and resolution of both issues until July eighth. Second. All in favor, I weigh this.
Bye, Matthew Ray.
Alright, I go vote.
Tag Carpenter, aye.
Alright, okay, so July eighth, I think we can.
You can still put your house up for sale.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we're.
By the time you disclose this, it's a long.
I think we'll, yeah, this all, resolve by July.
That'd be great, I appreciate your time, Paul, I appreciate your time, we'll talk, uh, later this week, and you, I invited you to the meeting on the second with Paul Brennan, uh, Pat Brennan as well, so if you wanna see the final product of the road and the drainage.
Alright, I'll join you.
Alright, great, I think for us procedurally, one thing that's different here, as far as those standard portions of the easement. We have traditionally always gone into it that any road could be brought, it's with town to go forward with the, now we're trying to be upfront. Certain types of roads qualify, and certain types of roads don't qualify, so in this case, when we did this, we probably should take a look at those, pick out the ones that aren't necessary to do, so we're not putting anything through this procedure. Uh, when we're not gonna want it in there, when it's not going to be taken in public.
We're, we're close, well, I appreciate your time, so I'll leave with the sign, agree, uh, covenants with you, and
Yeah.
hopefully we'll get some signatures this week, and call me, I'll come pick them up. Thank you so much, appreciate it, and so much, and time, thank you, thank you, guys.
Last item, update on MBTA communities zoning, so we have our MBTA. What are we, what are you calling? No, sorry.
Community zoning together, cause you're all halfway to starting.
Yeah, yeah, we're almost there.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, yeah, we had our first meeting on June seventeenth. Uh, Paul introduced everybody, we all introduced ourselves, and Paul went over the policy requirements and the schedule. Uh, you guys can see all this, but I'll mention it, we are targeting a public hearing on September twenty third. And that's just to, you know, put that date out there. In terms of the overall process, we learned that because there is a uh, it's in our interests to obtain a review from the state, a review and approval of the bylaw language from the state uh, before town meeting, and that process will take up to ninety days. Um, we determined that it's necessary for the committee to, uh, have the draw, uh, the bylaw in a state where it can be submitted to the state for review in August. Probably early August, which is very, very soon. So, uh, based on that, uh, at the meeting, you know, we discussed, uh, you know, how, how we're gonna accomplish that. We discussed the, uh, implications of, uh, sort of taking the, uh, plain vanilla, if you will, uh, language from the state and just putting that before the town. And I think that although, uh, some folks thought that was the best way to go as a sort of minimal effort, after some discussion, uh, consensus, consensus emerged that, uh, we should do better than that. Uh, that it's not really in the town's interest to put something like that before town meeting, uh, because it would be a meaningless act. So at this point, our next meeting is scheduled for July second. Paul, uh, and, uh, the vice, the chair, and I'm acting as vice chair, uh, are investigating what is possible based on what's left of the budget with Stantec. And, uh, we know it's, it's a squeeze play, and and we can't do much, so we're trying to finesse this. Um, the other issue we discussed at length was site selection. Uh, previously, work had been performed, as you know, on several sites, and an assessment was conducted, uh, and, uh, in the memo, uh, activating the committee, Paul had mentioned, um, that he was pretty forward to recommendation for the Tremont Street site and the, uh, Summer Street. You know, Tarkinland site at Bonji's, there's another site on Summer Street. As the two sites, because they can meet the need. Now, I haven't spoken with you about this, Paul, but I went through the materials available on the town's website, and, um, we had a contractor previously evaluate the sites and put them through the, uh, calculator, uh, but they didn't do the Bonji's site. So that's something we'll have to address before the next meeting, if we wanna talk about that site. Um, so, where it stands.
So the issue for me is, i- if we haven't done the calculation, we have no idea whether it's gonna get approved. Um, because you, you, the, obviously, there's a spreadsheet from E O H L C that you have to tick all the boxes. I, I, you know, my personal view on this is the notion that we are going to rush this process along in order to get pre-approval from the state. When in fact, the state has barely approved any of these things, irrespective of whether pre-approval was sought in the first instance, and you're deemed in compliance irrespective of whether you get pre-approval. It seems to me to be, um, I'm trying to moderate my language here. It seems to me to be foolish to seek the preapproval route. But that's my view.
Understood. Appreciate that and welcome you to participate in the next meeting if you want to contribute that opinion. I think that the conversation around this related to town meeting, the discussion at town meeting, this is really what we're anticipating. And if we have language that has been approved by the state. Then there is a great disincentive to revise, attempt to revise that language at town meeting. Now, certainly, we can go forward to town meeting without the approval and take other, you know, tactics and strategies to satisfy the public. That all the issues have been per, you know, properly vetted and thought through. But we identified, you know, again, through the discussion that having that approval in hand would be much more in our interests. I agree with you.
Nearly impossible. I agree.
When when's the town meet? When's the proposed town meeting date?
November eighteenth, to my knowledge.
Has town council given us any guidance on non non compliance yet? And I know that is a. And wait as well, they're moving to target that has not been. You know, decided yet.
But that's gonna that is gonna be forget. I mean, yes, state preapproval will play into it, but we all know town meeting, the first question going to me, what? What happens if we say no? And.
How much do we lose?
How much do we lose? What what's the ramifications to the town? And I think I don't know the town council is even in a position to give us somewhat guidance.
I think the select board was looking into that and I don't think they even.
So our town council. Has vigorously defended the rights of towns to say no to this. And they have actual knowledge of this. I've been involved in it. My my concern is this. I don't see this as being. Well regarded at town meeting.
No matter how well put together.
I agree, right? And if we're just setting ourselves up for a lot of activity. In order to shoot us shoot ourselves in the foot. And then. Quite frankly. This whole thing is bubbling through the court system currently. I think you're going to have a fairly persuasive argument. That. We ought not do any. And so the the notion that we're going to sort of. Accelerate all our processes over the summer. In a town that generally doesn't do a lot of municipal activity in the summer. Seems. It seems as if it it isn't the best course to me, but that's the, I mean, this is the discussion. That's my view and.
Yep, I think what we have. What, as I understand it from the select board level and. Again, the reason with with the background would be it already done. On the MBTA communities, we we started on it pretty much right away when it. When it came about as far as, you know, how do we identify some sites? This board, as it was in creation at the time with the town planner at the time. We had decided, you know, let's look at where our potentially least. Disrupted locations might be, but the minimum that could beat the limit what the state is. And to take it that way. My understanding from. What I I know about with the select boards meeting on these and and why we're going to have a special town meeting. Is I think they want to be able to show at least to the state that we went through. That we went through all the motions and the town meeting votes it down, they vote it down. But that we went through all the motions and and I feel like that's one of the arguments they want to try to make back to the state if they start trying to withhold funds from us. Or anything, but that's going to be irrelevant because that's all going to work through the court. Yeah, anyway, but at the same time, like I know you guys are now talking about the Bonji's site. We've done a quick overview on that site before, while potentially it could be. We've already done the review. I believe that review calculation has been done on. The sites we had already chosen and I thought we were meeting the requirements. We could always in the future. Say all this goes through, the town votes it through and the state's happy and everybody's good with it. You can always in the future add another site. But I think you're going to put that group through a big run around now to try to get a new calculation with a new site. And then what do we do? Then he gets town meeting and they can say, well, why are we over cooking this and giving them too many sites? For possibilities on this. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to that. I think we have the site. Potentially the sites evaluated. They've been through that process already. If we need to get a bylaw of some form put together. I would suggest we don't want to spend more time looking at more sites that that nobody knows of. I mean, the public. Has had knowledge of these other sites for a while now. We even had some hearings on it. We throw a new site in, they're going to say, well, now now what you guys do? That because we always get that when we get to town meeting. Wait a minute, what's this last minute thing that's been added here? And that that shoots ourselves in the foot. I, to me, I think. We'd be better off trying to get the bylaw. I don't disagree that it it's a good idea for us to maybe not take the canned version of it and tweak it some. For the for the town, but at the same time, if if a canned version of what's out there that that town council can give us or anything else. With our sites on it. Meets the state requirements. We're still rolling the dice whether the. The town meeting is going to go, special town meeting is going to go for it or not anyway. But it also doesn't mean that once we have that in place and we send it to the state. That one that they approve it and two. That if they do, we can't make further adjustments and give that to the state. At future town meetings. Long as we have kind of the minimum that meets the requirements for the state now and and. Kind of, I think to Wayne's point, I I I don't know what how much of a chance this stands to get into town meeting anyway. People don't like being pulled in half teams.
I know. If I may, Scott, this is this is enough. Again, if we want. Input into the process, please attend an EMZAC meeting, an MBTA communities meeting, because I'm not going to be able to convey your. You know, the rich information you're providing through me to that group. So. But let me at least engage on it here if that's, you know, allowed. First of all. Anybody who says, what's this, you know, pulling a fast one at the last minute, hasn't been paying attention. We've been working on this for three years. So in addition, I would say that the guidance that this committee is relying upon is all prior work. The nineteen, the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, the housing production plan, the prior plans in support of this effort with MBTA communities. The work of the age and dementia friendly friendly task force in Duxbury focuses heavily on housing needs in the community. So Duxbury has engaged the community. We have collected input on the housing needs and we know what they are. So if we put forward a bylaw which addresses those needs, those constituents who provided that input will support it. There is a tremendous need for this housing. It's going to take years for it to get built. You know this. My concern would be this idea of let's just put a placeholder in. And then change it later is that that's a bylaw. That's an opening. If we put something that doesn't meet our needs and we receive an application under it, aren't we required to approve that and have it be built under those rules? Is that the case?
What you see, I mean, the issue is that the application you're talking about is an application of. The ability to build by right with only site plan approval, right? But quite frankly, and this is before I got involved in this very deeply. This board through its then town planner designated areas that were in all likelihood, except with respect to Island Creek. Unlikely to in any close, anywhere close to the near term. Result in more housing. And I'm not saying that that's dissimilar to lots and lots of communities in the Commonwealth. But by and large, there are many communities in the Commonwealth and quite frankly, including this one. Who picked overly districts that are already fully developed. And where the impact of the law. In any, in all real likelihood, will be minimal. So so the notion that we're going to change tracks and in fact, do something that. Provides for housing? In any material way? That's not what the overlay district looks like now. And it it just not the way that it's not the way the town, it's not the way the planning board addressed it. Maybe there there's some housing in Island Creek that could be built. But there. There is minimal, if any, likely addition to the housing stock and the multifamily housing stock. Based on our proposed overlay.
And this partially comes as well from the the Affordable Housing Trust, et cetera, is is. As we know, has control over parts of the land in town that we've purchased using their funds. And they're going out to bid to put up twenty, forty, fifty, one of them is almost a hundred. Units. On one of the properties might have a high street, et cetera. Don't remember exactly where. And received no bids to do it. So I don't know. From a planning board's perspective, the way we took this on to begin with was this is something being shoved at us that we have to do because we're an MBTA community, adjacent MBTA community. And that we were looking to meet the minimum guidelines to get something before the state, if that was going to be a requirement at the end of the day. Not that we were particularly looking for. The most viable spot possible for anything to happen. I mean, quite frankly, our our most viable spot for this entirely in this town. Is Island Creek, which is already has shown built very dense and, you know, done along that route. You can make quite dense areas with apartments with forty feet. You don't need. You don't need the MBTA communities. Magic, because you got to keep in mind, any properties we put into this. You can say we want to play around with the bylaw a little to suit us, but you're not going to be able to do anything. It has to be by right. But all we're doing is site plan approval. You know, the bylaw can have all sorts of nice words in it, but it has to be by right.
Right, but so the site plan approval in lots of municipalities has been.
Right, the bylaw?
Has been juiced to the point that it's damn near a special permit.
Okay.
I I mean, that's what the town of Rain Tree has done. That's what multiple towns have done where they make the special. The 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 site plan approval process. And of course, you can't deny a site plan. Approval, you can only condition it, but the site panel, the site plan approval process is in fact so all risk that in fact. Mirrors, almost mirrors the special permit. Process. That said, tag. You're right to encourage anybody who has an opinion on this. To show up at the meetings and. I may well do so.
Think your presence would be appreciated, Wayne, so.
Is the recommendation of the communities that to add, because my understanding was obviously the Island Creek and Summer Street were the two identified lots. Is the working group now saying we we would like to also investigate Bonji's as a potential third site? That'll be a four.
Yeah, my understanding was the three sites were Island Creek, the Congress Street, Summer Street site.
And now I'm missing one.
And then Temple Street. Next to the height.
Then you're looking at adding Bonji's, which will require the the calculations.
Well, no, I maybe asked Paul to wave in this because I'm quoting his terms from the memo. When he sent the memo to activate the committee, he suggested. Island Creek and Bonji's two sites.
All right, so we've got a different suggestion from the from the new town planner than the prior town planner.
Yeah.
But at at the same time, if you really wanted to do this, why is it near mine? On on list.
That's right. I mean, you could you could put a lot of places. We tried to be the least disruptive in what we were doing for something that. The public who was showing up to our meetings at the time was saying, how do we not do this?
Yeah, and and that's not inconsistent with.
Whatever it is, yeah.
I I I guess where I was going with my question, if we are looking at now at a potential additional site. It's a little late in the game if if that train is coming down the the pike at the end of this year, regardless of what happens at town meeting. And then and the second tag, my other question we can turn, you had mentioned, you know, budget, right? I I it doesn't seem. I I I agree with you. I don't I don't know that it's dollars well spent to try and chase down a preapproval if we're tight on budget wise. Even if that preapproval may not come in by the time we have to have that special town meeting on November eighteenth. So I'd be curious just to see what's the what's the bandwidth there, because that may dictate whether. You even bother with the preapproval regardless of whether it has merit or not, but what, you know, budget.
Yep, it's a really small number of communities have sought preapproval. And the notion that we're going to get preapproval in order to be able to help sell the town meeting. I don't buy it. And quite frankly. Even if you don't get preapproval, as long as you submit on time, it doesn't matter. You're deemed in compliance with the law. I I think we are.
Even if they reject it afterwards.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think we're literally. Trying to comply with a false deadline and and that that makes very little sense to. Without driving Paul crazy.
Yep. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The deadlines have been made quite clear by the Commonwealth. The reason why I suggested. Taking a closer look at the Bonji site is that I understand that there are sixteen undeveloped acres of upland. And that the owners have had conversations going back the last two years about developing their property. The owners have indicated to me that they they intend to develop their property in the very near future. And what I will do tomorrow is contact Stantec to determine, ask them whether or not they have run the compliance model. And and if they haven't, I'll ask them, you know, if the board would like to have them run that model and look at it, we can have that done. But the idea was that if that land was going to be developed one way or the other in the near future, that the town could. Capture that as part of this process to include that. But this is, this came in later in the game. And if the board wants to go with the the sites that have already been discussed, then that's the direction that you should take. At the outset of our first meeting, the select board member representative made it clear that that. The law is clear, the timeline is clear, and that the town needs to do its best to comply with the law. He didn't indicate that he saw this as an option or that we should wait and see what happens and. So where this working group is is moving forward with the assumption that we have a difficult timeline. We understand this has been going on for two years now. And there's been a lot of work done by the previous planner and and two consulting firms. And and it's our understanding that, you know, they're going to take their best shot at bringing an article to town meeting and and seeing what happens.
But you can fully comply with law, fully and completely comply with law without going through the preapproval process. And the preapproval process is what's driving this your timeline, this August something timeline.
We we need to have an article prepared when the select board opens the warrant. That's that's our real deadline. The process is optional. I I don't know whether the state would even be able to to give us a response in a timeframe that would be helpful. But the.
I can guarantee you they won't. I there there are multiple transit communities that have submitted their bylaws. On time. Six months ago. That haven't heard back from the state.
I I'm not surprised. The states now has has seventy one communities. I I'm not surprised, uh, the states now has has seventy one communities have voted to approve and fourteen have voted, um, um. Have voted not to adopt bylaws, but, um, the deadline hasn't come to pass yet at the end of the year, so some will come back for another shot at it.
The transit community bylaw has passed. In the, and they've submitted. And and there aren't approvals back yet.
Oh, there's, most of them, there are only two approvals out there, so we're talking about a state agency that that really has a handsful that.
It it just seems ridiculous to me that we're going to. Run this process so that we get a preapproval. Uh, make a preapproval effort, that's. I, if the select board wants to come to the conclusion that we're gonna have a special town meeting, we're gonna go do this.
That they want us to propose something to town meeting and get an up or down vote on it.
Right, but to go through a preapproval process where we have. Very little likelihood of even having any input by the state. Prior to town meeting. And preapproval is not required. Is a waste of time.
So if if the board decides that you don't wanna submit it for preapproval, um, you know, there is some risk that there'll be elements in the bylaw that the state might not accept. But our consultants have, uh, have been through this, um, eh, with other communities, and I think they should have a good, uh, uh, understanding of what the state will or will not accept. The example.
But even if there are elements that the state won't accept, the state is ye- yet to determine what they're going to do with the provisions that they don't like. So the question it. The question has has not even been answered whether they're gonna void the bylaw. Or whether they're just gonna take a blue pencil to the bylaw and take the stuff out they don't like. That question hasn't been answered.
Well, to take to take Paul's scenario further. Let's say it gets to town meeting, which and is approved, personally, I don't, I mean. Wouldn't put my betting on it, but let's say it does and. We've now hit compliance with the law.
Right.
If they, if the state completes its review with seven, eight months after that into two thousand twenty five likely. And comes back and says, we don't like, here's our, here's our red light game, we don't like it. We're 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 still in compliance and we're not at risk technically under the letter of the law now for withdrawing, you know, withholding grants or anything, we we've complied. And I think that's one of the the select board biggest concern, uh, and and I think at that point it would be a discussion. To Wayne's point, I don't think the state has. Frankly, the resources to have figured that out yet, right, for towns, for towns that comply, but then the state doesn't like the bylaw that was approved. In compliance with the law, now, now how do we go back and work with each municipality?
I would say they gotta do deadlines, you should probably get a different deadline based on. How what they don't like in the Bible.
Or they're, or they're just gonna strike what they don't like.
Right, well, yeah, just knock it out and say, here's what you've got.
Right, the the, we're not, we, this provision goes away, uh, but.
But the hammer of grant withhold holding and lawsuits are off the table, we've we've complied at least with the requirements of the laws it stands. Today.
Okay, great, so thank you, I really appreciate that, and again, the members of the committee are not directly involved in the legal process as you are and don't have some of this information. So we can bring that to them. Uh, so setting aside, forget about approval, that's fine. The fact remains that we're gonna hold a public hearing on September twenty third to approve this language. And what I am attempting to do is, uh, with the chair, working through the chair of the MBTA Communities Working Group. Make sure this process is moving towards a positive conclusion as quickly as possible. Now, if we don't have the stick of the compliance process to to prompt us. We have the carrot of the needs of the community, again. If we don't get the by right rules. Correct the way we want them. We can see a project next year that we don't want. And. If, and I mean, we all know that we already have forty B, so we're already getting projects we don't want. So I, you know, I understand that it's, um, I don't like the pressure that we're being put on, the coercion. From the state and I'm glad that's being litigated, but it is the situation that we are in, we have needed to do this for a long time. And we have not done this and the state knows this and they've provided us with the impetus to get it done and get it done correctly. And that's all I'm trying to do, not do something that makes it worse.
Well, well, thank, thank you for the update on 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 the meeting, I I think you got more, um. Input than you needed or wanted, but that that's. Uh, but we will. I I I intend to attend on July sixth.
Okay.
Is that a Zoom, is that a Zoom meeting or are you meeting in in place somewhere?
Tigran, it's gonna be here, I think.
Be here, okay. Emily, if you could. Run for that out, that meeting out to the entire planning board and we'll see, you know, how many people. From the planning board can can attend. Yeah, and 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 keep the direction going. Paul, outside of the, I think we've agreed that the preapproval probably isn't worth it, but to Tag's point. If this is going out to a public hearing on September, I I forget what date you used, Tag, for, um.
Twenty three.
Twenty three. Stan Tech will still have to have a form draft bylaw completed to us. In time for that to be circulated prior to that, forget the preapproval process.
Right, we have it done in August, one way or another.
On that timeline, uh, to to be able to. Give us, you know, a draft bylaw that that we can review and put out to the town prior to a discussion on the twenty third of September.
I I anticipate that we'll have a draft bylaw amendment by the end of July.
And so, but multiple transit communities have already done this.
It's gotta be a can.
There there has to be. One of these that has been tweaked from the state's. Form. Already in the can.
The state. Yeah, we we have a model by law that the state has, uh, provided to communities. Um, the committee, the working group has received copies of that and they've looked at it, I've looked at it, it also includes, um. Uh, a narrative explanation on each element, you know, definitions, applicability, each element of, uh, of it is, uh, explained out pretty clearly. So, um, this is.
The young can bylaws, transit community after transit community has have already made their tweaks. Uh, because they've already been submitted. Uh, the town of Rain Tree has an elaborate one, I've looked at it. Uh, a lot. Transit community after transit communities already made their tweaks, the the notion that we're trying to reinvent the wheel here. At expense to the town makes no sense to me.
That's not what we're attempting to do, and I don't appreciate the exaggeration, Wayne.
I don't know.
Do it right, trying to get the, it will be an sample from some established act, but it's not gonna be a transit community, we're an adjacent community. The transit community language is grossly inappropriate for Duxbury.
Why?
August into this.
Why, why, why is it, it it's the same law, why would the transit community language be grossly inappropriate? It it all it is is about how the site plan approval works. I, that that makes no sense to me, Tag, not true.
Yeah, the bylaw is basically saying, in these areas, this is by right.
Yes.
And then it becomes, how are you gonna deal with approving the site to build it?
Yeah, literally, that's what the bylaw is about.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, does our cons- our consultant must have this, because what comes from the state and the consultant must have something that's tweaked.
Oh, yeah.
And ready in the can. That's probably where you wanna have your start and mo- maybe not do much more to it. Even.
Exactly.
I don't, I just wanted, I would like you guys to be able to achieve your timelines, that's what we're we're trying to get at here, achieve the timeline so that we can get there. And if we can get to what the select board wants is to schedule town meeting for a vote and then the town decides what we're, what we're gonna do. I appreciate you wanna put it in the, in the. Best form and or light. To try to get the town. To approve it, that's that's fine, fine to get behind whichever way we're trying to go there, happy to get behind. That effort when we get, when we get to that, when we get to that point, but the biggest thing is to just get something to the state. This is what I hear from the select board, what, they're not saying it to be directed, but what I'm hearing from what they're saying is. Get this before the state so that we don't lose any of our funding, we meet the deadline. That's what they're looking. Right? And I appreciate, the group should want to make it a good product, I I hundred percent agree with that. Um, if you can get a quick turnaround on what the Bonji's. Situation would be to have as a potential site, then maybe town meeting is voting on which of these four sites, which of the three do you want? You know, we can make it a two part, it could be things like that could happen to it. Because I think you could always in the future add another property. To that. By vote of the town.
Yeah, and even if the Bonji site is immediately. Up up for development. As the world stands today, they can do it. They can develop it and the town will have meaningful input. Into how it gets developed, it does not get developed as a right. And even if it goes forty B. There is meaningful input beyond what. An as of right development would entail.
Didn't be no difference on the forty B at Island Creek.
Right.
If they wanna make it denser than our typical forty Bs, they have the ability through forty B to do it, they can build apartments under forty B, right, so that's.
Yeah, it it, I know, this is a very difficult issue and, um. And and Tag, thank you for taking it on.
Is is next Tuesday's meeting, Tag, public or is that just the the? The the working group and and members here of the planning board?
They're in coverage too. Well, okay, let's talk about logistics and again, thanks, Wayne, I appreciate the dialogue and we need the best information we can get, uh, and that's what I'm trying to dig up. Uh, as far as the schedule, there there does need to be on the calendar a joint meeting. With the select board, I don't know about a joint meeting with the planning board. Uh, Paul, if you have that schedule in front of you, you might be able to speak to that, but certainly there's gotta be a monthly or bi-monthly synchronization on this.
Uh, to to address Matt's question, um, the working group meetings are posted, they're, um. So and they're open to the public to attend in person or virtually. Um, and so, uh. Anybody that wants to understand when our meetings are, those are all on our website and and the meetings will be posted and the public's invited to, uh, participate.
All the working groups. Alright, perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay, uh, Paul, do you have anything else for us before we finish up the meeting?
I don't, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay. Alright.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Alright, I can, we have a second, all those in paper, roll call vote, Tag.
Carpenter, aye.
Matt, aye, Scott, aye, Wayne, aye. We are adjourned, thank you, thanks.